Mr. Chairman, it is Christmas. One nation, one God, in the circle. Liberty, justice, and law.
Thank you very much. Our first agenda item is public comments. Is anybody in the audience who has some comments?
I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, it's nice to see you back in the old chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Glad to be back. I do appreciate everything you have. Your kind wishes.
When I was absent, we passed up a meeting.
All right. Thank you. Next thing is the acceptance of minutes. We have the minutes of December 16th, 2014. Do we have any comments on those minutes?
No.
Do we have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 16th.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor? And one abstain. Cranchop abstain, otherwise unanimous. All right, we have correspondence items. I'll make a motion that we accept correspondence items A through L as indicated in the agenda for January 6th. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comment?
Yeah, there's one item that I'll bring up under new business later on, but...
Very good. All right, all in favor? Second correspondence passes unanimously. Item number four, consent agenda. Question for you, Kevin. This is a new appointment, right? This is not a reappointment? It's a new person?
That's correct.
Yes, correct. The Town School Building Committee. We had done them at our prior school. We did that one at our prior Board of Selectmen meeting. This is just a new individual that got appointed as the rep as they met after our meeting. So this is a new one.
So do we need to do any consent agenda or outside of that since it's a new guy?
We can pull him outside of that.
All right. Let's see here. Hang on a second. So this is just, this is school committee's new appointment to replace somebody else?
That's correct.
All right.
To the Town School Building Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Justin Hem from the school committee to the Town School Building Committee with a term expiring December 31st, 2015.
Very good. I'll second that motion. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes five to zero. Some other appointments. We have the Coolidge School Reuse Task Force and we have the Cultural Council. Looks like we have some candidate members of the reuse task force here. And do we have any, do we have them all here or...?
I think all but two were. Oh, yeah. We had heard from a couple that were going to be here, a couple that didn't respond, and other two that said that they would not be here but didn't submit their letter of interest and resume.
All right. We didn't get a copy of the letters of interest, did we?
Yeah, I don't think they went in. I think there was one letter of interest and one resume which was from Timothy Hess, who we appointed last meeting to the Cultural Council.
Gotcha. Want to do a little description of the people and recommendation of them?
Yeah, I can give a rundown. Currently recommending three individuals to the Coolidge School Reuse Task Force members that represent a variety of committees and bring a breadth of different experiences to the group. Jack McKean, who's in the audience today. I think everybody's familiar with Jack's involvement in the community certainly. He's been chosen to sort of represent the Economic Development Committee within, on this particular task force group. Ken Newhauser, who is a member of the Green Communities Committee as well as a Historical Commission member. He's representing the Historical Commission on the group. Timothy Hess, as I mentioned, we appointed Tim the, at our last Selectmen's meeting, to the Cultural Council. He's expressed interest in the reuse task force as well and will represent the Cultural Council. Rick Lefferts, who did say he would not be able to make this evening. Rick's been a longtime member of the Community Preservation Committee and brings a background, historical background as well and some redevelopment experience to this group.
Just a question, Kevin. The appointment slip for Rick Lefferts, it says he's the Capital Planning Committee's representative.
Yeah, that's wrong. I had Becky edit that. You should have the official one.
Okay.
I think Becky saw CPC as...
I got you.
It did get updated.
A common error.
And then Lee Acker, who's here this evening. Lee is a member of our Council on Aging. Serves as our Council on Aging representative. And then the two at-large folks that reached out and expressed interest were the only other two members that were being recommended. One is former Selectman Sally Bouvier. Like, everybody knows Sally, certainly in the community, her involvement in the community. But she has expressed interest in this group, as has Vicki Brown Stevens, which I don't know, think she was going to be able to attend. Vicki was put in touch with me through Linda Thayer and is a neighbor up in that area and has an interest in the building and serving on this task force. So those were the seven individuals. I think there's three, two or three here this evening.
All right. Candidates for the appointments, you're welcome to step up and make a statement or you're welcome to stay where you are. Either way is fine with me. And if nobody makes a move, I'll say you're fine with staying where you are. And then I'll just ask the board if they have any questions for our candidates. No questions from the board? All right, this is going to be an easy one. I'm going to try to do this one here. I'm going to make a motion to appoint to the Coolidge School Reuse Task Force for a term ending June 30th, 2015. Jack McKean, representing the Economic Development Committee. Ken Newhauser, representing the Historical Commission. Timothy Hess, representing the Cultural Council. Rick Lefferts, representing the Community Preservation Committee. Lee Acker, representing the Council on Aging. And at-large candidates Sally Bouvier and Vicki Brown Stevens. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you very much for your interest. Now we have an appointment to the Cultural Council. Want to introduce that one, Kevin?
Yes, Heather Western is being requested to be appointed. Heather has met with the folks from the Cultural Council. At least she's here this evening as well to join us if the board has any questions. But she did meet with the Cultural Council. They're recommending her appointment to their group.
All right. I'm going to drag her down here.
Heather, take a seat. I have to go up there.
Sitting in front of the big microphone. Just briefly introduce yourself and your interest in the Cultural Council position.
So I'm Heather. Just bought a house here in October. And I guess one of the big things that I liked about the town was the downtown and thought it was really cool. And I thought doing the Cultural Council would be a really good way to kind of bring arts into there and be involved in that, so, yeah.
Very good. All right. What do we have for questions for our...
Quick question. First off, thank you.
Yeah.
And especially being such a new resident.
Yep.
Nice to see you get involved so quickly. What actually drew your attention to Cultural Council? Do you know a member or was it something that you've done in the past?
It's actually, my mom actually does that in the town that, she lives in Ashburnham, like 40 minutes out, but she's always done that and I thought, I thought it was really cool and so I wanted to do it too.
Again, thank you for stepping up so soon.
Very nice. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No questions, just thank you.
All right. Well, let's see. I make a motion to appoint Heather Western to the Cultural Council with a term ending June 30th, 2017. I've got you for a while.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comment? All in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. And we have a liquor license hearing at 7:15, but we have time for the next one, I think. Item number six, ratification of the fire chief contract. Can you introduce that one?
Yes, Chief Stowers is here as well this evening. The board reviewed at our last executive session meeting the proposed agreement, employment agreement contract with the fire chief. It's here before you this evening and it's final condition for ratification. Biggest takeaway was cleaning up the contract, make it a little more consistent with non-union employee, other previous contracts that have been drafted since the employment of the fire chief going on now, three years ago, have changed a little bit with how they're structured. So it's more consistent with the town's non-union staff personnel contracts. And again, I think it's representative of the chief's service to the community, a modest COLA increase over the term of the contract and that's it.
All right. Chief, any comments?
I've enjoyed working here. I appreciate the support of the town and particularly the board. I know it's changed a lot in the last year, but I feel like I've gotten a lot of support and I hope that continues.
Very good. All right.
I will make a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Maynard and the Maynard Fire Chief Anthony Stowers for a term February 6th, 2015 until June 30th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
No.
All in favor? Very good.
Congratulations, Chief.
What do we need for signatures on this? Just Tim this last. Three of them. All right, I need to delay for a minute before the hearing time. Hey, Kevin, can you remind me the motion to open the hearing is roll call?
Yes.
Did it with closing?
Is there any paperwork for this hearing?
I don't know. Do we have any paperwork for this hearing?
Yes, you just sign the Form 43 for the hearing.
Yeah, I have a copy of a Form 43.
In the folder, yeah.
But there's no, sometimes we get other documents with nothing.
Tackett, no. Was it in the Dropbox?
No, I didn't get anything.
All right. So I'm going to read the legal notice before we make a motion to open the hearing. Legal notice. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 6th, 2015 at 7:15 PM in the Michael J. G. Nottis Meeting Room, Number 201 of the Maynard Town Building, on the application of transfer of a wine and malt alcohol as a common victular license from Thai Sur Amari LLC to Maynard Spirits LLC, doing business as Amari Liquors at 125 Main Street. Copy of the application is on file in the Municipal Services Licensing Division office.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
What is the correct address? 125 or 129?
Kind of curious about that myself. What is the correct address?
We have 129 on the agenda.
We have 125 on the Form 43, so I'm guessing that's it, right?
Is that the correct address, 125?
We have 129 on a whole liquor license, town license.
Yeah, I think it is 125, yeah.
125?
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so we got that, right?
25.
Well, I think it's relevant because if you're going to act on the liquor license for 129 and it's going to be for 125, there's something wrong with your procedure.
Well, I'm just happy we got the legal notice correct. So I'm going to make a motion to begin the hearing for the approval of application of transfer of an all alcohol as package store license. This is a roll call vote. Jason?
Yes.
David?
Aye.
Cranchop, aye?
Yes.
Tim?
Aye.
All right. This meeting, this hearing is officially open. Thank you very much. And Kevin, who do we have?
Um...
Is it five, nine?
Good to see you.
Kevin, can you introduce the issue in hand?
I don't actually have the Form 43 in my folder.
I got a...
We have the establishment owner's name.
I have a Form 43, but I can't tell you what it's telling me to do.
Okay, yeah, it's the transfer of the Maynard Spirits LLC, DBA Amari Liquors, Manager LaChu Kawani. Mr. Kawani, LaChu?
That's right.
Okay. This evening. And Attorney Katanzaro is representing the buyer, is that correct?
That is correct.
Kevin, one other technical thing. Can I see the Form 43 again?
Yep.
Yeah, I guess isn't all... What kind of license are we transferring?
It's a all pack, all alcohol package store license.
That was not in the legal notice.
Yeah, and I noticed that...
Legal notice is a wine and malt as a common vic.
Yeah, there was a correction made on that.
I don't know what that means.
It's all alcohol, package store.
But how was the legal notice corrected?
The, I don't believe that the legal notice was corrected. But I also think that because the purpose of the notice was to bring attention to the public that the liquor license was going to be or requested to be transferred, that the, in essence, typographical error in the legal notice, I don't believe is material. It is an all alcoholic beverage retail package store license. That's the only license that the business owner has. And I did, unfortunately, just notice after I received the second legal notice that there was that typographical error.
All right, I'm okay with going, continuing with the hearing if you are as a proponent, although I suppose in theory, you know, ABCC could kick it all back and have to do it again.
We'd take that risk if the board is willing to take that risk. I mean, because we, this does have to be approved by the ABCC. We'll go from here if this board approves to the ABCC and if, and they will be aware of the fact that the legal notice was different than what the actual license was.
From a legal standpoint, though, it does meet the intent of what, you know, as far as the...
Just no tech, not telling what ABCC does. All right, well, very good. All right, would you like to introduce the issue?
Yes, very, very briefly. My name is Angelo Katanzaro. I represent Maynard Spirit LLC, which is a, the manager of that company is William De Petri. Mr. De Petri is here with me in the audience today. We are under contract with Thai Sur Amari LLC, the present license holder, to purchase the ongoing business inventory and leasehold located at 125 Main Street, including the alcoholic beverage package store license. We, like I said, we are under a contract. That contract calls for performance subsequent to final approval by this board and by the ABCC. Within seven or 10 days following final approval, there will be a literal, an actual transfer of the business from the existing license holder to Maynard Spirits LLC. With me to my left is LaChu Kawani. He is the individual who is going to be operating the business for us. In your package, Mr. Kawani had provided certain background information. He is 70 years old. He is TIPS certified. He is, he has prior experience as an owner of a liquor store. He owned Norfolk Wine and Spirits in Norfolk, Mass. for three years and operated that as a sole proprietorship. He will be our full-time manager at this liquor store. We intend to, but have not yet, also be hiring some part-time help to assist Mr. Kawani. He is a naturalized citizen and his naturalization papers are part of the package that we presented to you. The seller, I don't know if the seller is present, but as I said, we are under contract with the seller to close this deal as soon as we get final ABC approval.
Very good. Kevin, are there any comments or questions from staff?
No.
Police okay with it?
Yes.
If I may, I got a couple, I guess, technical issues. The previous license, I think that was presented to us just to see who the previous owner was, says 129 Main Street. The Form 43 that's presented with us tonight says 125 Main Street. The legal notice says 125 Main Street. Are these all just typographical errors?
If I can respond to that, Mr. Kevin.
Sure.
The first that I heard of...
You have to keep the door open, please. It has to.
The first that I heard of 125 was when I sat down. The contract that I received from the seller's attorney indicated 129 and as I believe you pointed out, the present license says 129. Now, I don't know how the buildings are numbered in this town and maybe that building has numbered 125 and 129. It's one of the shops on Main Street, so I don't know. I thought it was 129 Main Street based on what the information that was provided.
I think we're going to go with 129 since the current license is for that.
That's what the current license says. And that's what the attorney who prepared the documents told me and indicated.
Very good.
And the other question is, Kevin, council mentioned material provided. Why isn't it in our packet and why didn't we get a separate list of it?
Yeah, I'll have to find it. Yeah, I don't know. I didn't realize it wasn't in Dropbox. I haven't seen it.
And that material is about Mr. Kawani's experience?
It's the application.
Yeah.
For transfer and then it's the, no, it does not include his experience. It's a query form, okay? That gives you his background information. It doesn't, and the, there's no disclosures in the materials about his background. That's usually what the subject of the public hearing is and that's why I brought him here with us tonight so that if the board had any questions of him, he's here to respond to those questions.
Very good. I guess I will ask Mr. Kawani. He touched on your experience in Norfolk, I guess it was. Can you expand upon that?
Yes, I ran the shop for three and a half years exactly in Norfolk. And it was a 24 hundred square feet shop with three employees with me, you know? And after a while, I just wanted to just sell it off. I got a good offer which I couldn't refuse it. So that's when I sold it.
Very good. And your interest in coming here to operate this one?
Yes.
What, why are you interested in here instead of...
Because now I'm retired, so this will give me something to do.
Okay. Without the ownership hassles. Very good, thank you. Questions from the board? Jason, let's start with you.
Have you ever had any issues with the ABCC?
No, never.
That's how you got?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe I missed it. Are you TIPS certified?
Yes.
You are. Yeah, that's the only question I have.
All right. Chris has a question. No questions. Tim?
Nope.
All right, I'll open it up to the audience. Do we have any questions from the audience? Mr. Tomlin?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need more clarification. You have just read a legal advertisement and there is some question as to actual number of Main Street, whether it's 129 or 125. And I think on that alone that this meeting should be re-advertised and go through the whole procedure again because we're reaching the point for some reason where we have clerical errors of omission or commission. And quite frankly, if I were this gentleman and I was applying for that license and the wrong number appeared on that license and the police chief fellas went in there and charged a liquor violation and they charged it for 129 and it's 125, it wouldn't hold up in court, would it? So I think you ought to start from scratch and do it over again and do it correctly. We cannot keep, can't keep reporting to have clerical errors of what you want, whatever you want to call them, appearing in legal advertisements. They're legal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? All right. Well, any discussion from the board?
What are the other members of the board's reaction to Mr. Tomlin's comments? Should we be concerned about the apparent clerical error in the legal notice and also on the licenses and everything else that, on this Form 43 that we have, et cetera? Is that something we should be concerned about?
Well, yes, I think, I'm concerned a little bit. I think we're going to go with the 129 Main Street address and, you know, the headache is mostly on the proponent if ABCC kicks it back. And maybe they will, maybe they won't, but I'm okay with just going with ABCC's decision on it.
It is, yeah, it is 129.
129 is the address?
It's 129.
The lease also says 129, as does the contract.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll forward you the picture to the front of the building that says 129.
The question then, I guess, becomes can, can any resident, Mr. Tomlin or anybody else, make a complaint to the ABCC that the, that the hearing was illegal or improper because the notice was improper? And are we wasting our time if that were to happen? Is that something we should be concerned about?
No. Everything else in the notice is accurate. Simple five versus a nine.
Well, actually, actually, it's not because there's also the wrong type of license was noted in the legal notice as well. So there's a multiple number of issues that, again, are we going to be here in three weeks or a month doing the same thing? Or would we be best to reconvene in two weeks?
Well, we couldn't, we couldn't post the hearing legally anyways.
We have to post it in the...
At this point, the most timely thing is to hope for the best and see what ABCC says.
And if, and if we do have to, if it kicks it back and we have to renotice it, then that's what we'll do?
All right, any...
If I may, my client has just asked that he would rather that we continue the hearing and renotice just to make sure because sometimes the ABCC gets, takes them 30 or 45 days before they get to these things. And so if we just renotice the hearing.
If we renotice, just so that it's clear, are we allowed to continue this hearing per se? We have to repost it and pretend as if this never happened?
That's...
Repost it, which requires a two postings in consecutive weeks? So theoretically...
Repost it.
We'll repost and there'll be a new...
There'll be a new date.
And we'll have to eat the fee for the...
Thank you. I think, I think that's probably the safest thing for everybody.
I'm a little confused. Are we continuing this hearing or are we ending it?
We're ending the hearing.
End the hearing. Repost for a new hearing with a new advertisement.
Okay, so there would be a formal motion to end this hearing and then no action taken?
Correct.
And then I'll resubmit in the next day or two and we'll start again.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
All righty.
To be clear, so we hit this, it's 129 Main Street and it is for an all alcohol retail
Package Store.
Package Store license.
Yep.
Did you guys review the ad before? Did you review the ad?
No, I did not see the ad until after it was printed, but this time we will.
Yeah, we'll make sure we send it to...
Okay, I make a motion to close this hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
And roll call vote. Jason?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin?
Aye.
Uh, yea?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
All right, this hearing is closed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, gentlemen.
Apologize, sir.
Not a problem, we'll fix it.
Well, the form that was gonna go to the ABCC was good except for the address.
And the big form piece of paper we signed, that was correct?
Huh? Yeah, I never noticed.
Oh, did we sign this?
I wouldn't have picked up on a five versus a nine anyway.
No, this is the old one. The old one's correct. The current one, the one that's currently active at the office. That license is still currently active, right?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is recommendations for promotions in the police department. Kevin, what do you got?
I'm gonna ask Chief Dubois to come up and provide the board with an overview of the promotional process that we undertake for the, undertook for the promotion of the lieutenant, as well as the two sergeant positions that are vacant. But is your intent to do the recognition after? Mr. Chair, I don't know what your preference is, if you want to go through the promotional process or take that aside and do the recognition for the-
I'd be happy to do the recognition.
Individual officer.
First.
Sure.
Okay. That was a last-minute thing.
Can you get Todd? Big crowd out there.
Yeah, right.
Unruly crowd.
They are.
What was the date of the event?
Uh, the 12th, December 12th. You'll find out. Yeah, have a seat.
It's still filing in, Chief.
Okay, I'll get started.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a great opportunity to recognize some outstanding work by one of the members of the police department. It's a great pleasure to be before you with this award for Officer Fletcher. I'm gonna explain what happened. On Friday, December 12th, at 11:10 in the morning, we received a very hysterical call from a female from Old Mill Road stating that her 71-year-old husband was outside in the backyard, fell over, and was now unresponsive. Within two minutes, a little under two minutes, Officer Fletcher was dispatched and arrived and immediately determined that the male was in cardiac arrest. He began performing CPR until the Maynard Fire Department personnel arrived. They ultimately used a defibrillator approximately three or four times and transported the male to Emerson Hospital, where they restored his heartbeat. He was revived, treated there, and then transported to, to a Boston hospital. Shortly after that, I received a letter from Emerson Hospital EMS liaison Ronald Gigliotti, and that, that letter states that Emerson Hospital would like to acknowledge and thank Officer Fletcher. Because of the speed and efficiency of Officer Fletcher performing CPR, this patient arrived at Emerson Hospital in critical but stable condition. On behalf of Dr. Walter Gert, the nursing director, Justine DeFranzo, and I, Ron Gigliotti, we would like to commend Officer Fletcher for an excellent job. I went and visited the male today, earlier today, him and his wife. He's in great shape, very thankful. He wanted to extend their heartfelt gratitude for the medical aid that Officer Fletch provided. They said that he arrived extremely fast. He didn't hesitate for taking immediate action. They were very confident in his abilities, and they'll be eternally grateful. And on a positive note, he said that Officer Fletcher only broke one of his ribs. So he was appreciative of that also. So on behalf of the police department, put a life-saving award to Officer Fletcher, which is, yeah.
Since August.
Since August, so he's one of our newest hired employees, and I talked to the fire chief about this also, and he, he was in complete agreement with me that for, for his, just his lack of experience with these type of incidents, you know, the, the reaction and his response is just extraordinary and just a great job. Very happy and very proud of him. So, very appreciative.
Got a good crew there, Chief.
We do. This is a great opportunity too. And these, these promotional opportunities, few and far between, and they mean a lot amongst the members of the police department and, and their families. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Lieutenant Dawson's retirement, which became effective-
Yesterday? The 5th?
The 4th. I don't have enough time tonight to talk about all the good things about Lieutenant Dawson. Just an outstanding person, outstanding lieutenant, police officer, member of the community, committed to the police department, too, Maynard. He's gonna be deeply missed, great guy to work with, just can't say enough good things about him. And when, and when a retirement happens, somebody else steps up and moves up and puts their mark on the police department and the community. In this case, we had, over the summer, one of the sergeants resigned, so we had a opening in the sergeant's position. And then when Lieutenant Dawson made his intentions known that he was gonna retire, we had a lieutenant's promotion and in turn makes a sergeant's promotion. So we have one lieutenant, two sergeants getting promoted today. The process involved a company that comes in and creates a, basically a civil service exam. That's pretty involved. That's a one-day event. And then the second part of that is they come in, and there was six police chiefs and the assessor that came in and put, everybody that went through it, threw the wringer. They really worked them hard for about seven or eight hours one day. Scenarios, written assignments, homework. They assess all the qualities that we determined we were looking for in, in the leadership positions. At the end of that, they create a list of scoring. And one for lieutenant and then one list for sergeants. And from that, I presented with Mike Noble as a sergeant. That was clearly the frontrunner in, in the promotion for lieutenant. He, he topped that list. And also, Bill Duggan and Paul Maria both tied on the sergeant's exam.
So are they gonna arm wrestle?
I don't know, I don't know. We didn't talk about that. I, I'm just gonna go through a quick summary, and this is just very brief overview of all three of them, 'cause they have pretty impressive resumes that were presented to the board, but for the benefit of everybody that didn't get to see their resumes. Bill Duggan became a patrol officer, Maynard in 2000. He was promoted to detective in 2007, and until last year, where he was the acting sergeant, when there was an opening, so, in 2013. Some of the duties, he was a mountain bike patrol officer. He spent a significant amount of time as a school resource officer, juvenile officer, where he coordinated, one of the big things he did for the community is the sheriff's camp, held at the Boys, Boys and Girls Club every summer. He coordinates that, he puts a lot of effort into that, along with some members of the fire department. He's a firearms instructor, teaches at the municipal police training academies, he's a use of force instructor, defensive tactics instructor, and he's currently the one member from Maynard who's on the NEMLEC SWAT team, which is pretty impressive, because there's about 40 of them with 62 communities, and he put a lot of effort into attaining that position. He also served around 10 years in the U.S. Army Reserves as a military police officer with the one-year tour in Afghanistan in 2010 and 11, and he's currently enrolled in Endicott College. Paul Maria was a, became a special police officer in 2000, and full-time in 2002. Some of the duties he had, he's been evidence officer, a detective, field training officer. He's currently an arson investigator, signed with the regional team with the, signed with the Maynard Fire Department. They're on a regional response team, so he's the police liaison investigator for that. And he's also been the officer in charge, so he was basically the acting sergeant on, on some of his shifts. Paul has a master's degree in criminal justice from Western New England and a bachelor's of arts in history from Norwich University, and also, I'm very impressed, he's an Eagle Scout. Mike Noble started here in 1994, as a patrolman until 2006. 2006, he was promoted to sergeant. Mike's been pretty instrumental in grant writing. He was a dare officer, and I'd say, most importantly and most impressively recently, he's been the accreditation manager. So, we're going through the statewide accreditation program, and I zeroed in on Mike right away and talked him into it, being the manager, because he had to rewrite all the policies. And we're rewriting all the procedures for, for the entire police department, and it's his niche, and he's, he's been flying right through it, and he's doing a great job with that. But it's a big undertaking, and, you know, he's done an excellent job with that so far. Although, as he'll probably not want to admit, we're not done yet. Got a little bit more to go with that, a lot more work ahead of us, but we're getting there. Mike also has a Juris Doctorate from Mass. School of Law, a master's degree in criminal justice from Western New England College, and a bachelor's in criminal justice from UMass Lowell. So, and I said, that's just a summary of their, their resumes that you've all seen. There's a lot of other things for all three of them that are pretty impressive. And in a summary of that, it just tells you the quality of the, the candidates in the competition to get promoted here, and I couldn't be happier with all three of the picks, and we're in very good hands in requesting that they, they get promoted to the three positions.
Very good, thank you. I'll go to the board. Do you have any questions for the chief or the officers? Tim?
Nope.
Chris?
I do not.
You do not? Mr. Gavin?
Um, no questions, just congratulations to all of you, and, you know, especially this time with all that's going on in the news or whatever with police officers. I think you guys know that the Maynard community is fully behind you. There's a number of police officers here tonight in uniform, others without uniform, but please know that the Maynard people are behind you 100%. So thank you for the job you do, and I look forward to working with you all as time goes on, but thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
Nothing additional.
I have a question for you, Chief. The promotion process seems pretty thorough.
Yes.
How's it compare to your day when you were working sergeant, lieutenant?
Civil service, it's a written exam, so it's one aspect of it. The assessment centers are, I'd say, more of a recent trend, and they're far more effective to predict success and some of the qualities that you're looking for versus just a written exam. So the combination is pretty typical now, and I think they're pretty effective, and it showed in what they went through. It's a lot of work.
Very good, thank you. Kevin, can these motions be done together or do you prefer separate?
Prefer separate.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the promotion of Michael Noble to the rank of lieutenant, effective January 6, 2015.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Yes, indeed.
Congratulations.
Assuming that was unanimous.
Yes.
It was unanimous.
In charge.
Yeah, let's do that. We're gonna sway them.
Mike, do you trust her to put those pins on you? Or her?
You might know solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Massachusetts and the town of Maynard, support the laws thereof, and will do the best of your skill and judgment diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of, offices, police lieutenant for the town of Maynard according to the constitutional laws thereof.
I know.
Get on the spot.
Next item on the agenda is recommendations for promotions in the police department. Kevin, what do you got?
I'm gonna ask Chief Dubois to come up and provide the board with an overview of the promotional process that we undertake for the, undertook for the promotion of the lieutenant, as well as the two sergeant positions that are vacant. But is your intent to do the recognition after? Mr. Chair, I don't know what your preference is, if you want to go through the promotional process or take that aside and do the recognition for the-
I'd be happy to do the recognition. best of your skill and judgment diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office as police sergeant for the town of Maynard according to the Constitution and laws thereof.
I do.
Thank you. You are a professional. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Congratulations.
It is, I think you're right.
I thought I'd be on this spot. I'm not talking about the budget. You going?
Ah, would just give them a minute to clear out?
I just wanna make sure I get all the stuff.
Yeah. We are, back to our own devices here.
Zack hangs in.
Can't leave, he's tied to that machine.
Yep. All right, so next up on the agenda is a two-minute discussion of the fiscal sixteen budget update.
Yeah, not a whole lot to provide at this point. I did put in for the board's review the latest revenue projections, but there's two, you'll notice there's two PDF files. One is, one is in the actual, in the full packet, the other is by itself. It's the detailed revenue budget sheet, which is essentially just captures the overview. That's a single sheet by itself. That is also in the longer one, which is listed as, saved as detail. That provides a little more detail into where that, where this cover sheet is coming from. So, it's the, it's the backup detail for local receipts and some other pertinent information with regards to the general fund revenue.
Will any of that change by our next meeting?
No, it's, no. This has already changed a few times. You can see, you'll notice it says Rev. thirteen, that's the thirteenth revision since probably September, early on when we start looking at the revenue. You'll notice that it's about slightly just under one point two million overall with levy, you know, with a prop two and a half in new growth figures. We have another sheet that we're, that is basically is taking the same numbers but is hiding two hundred thousand out of that six twenty-four. Just to kind of see where things are at, I don't know, it doesn't look promising that we're going to be able to do that, but not gonna know that until I still really start to dive into the budget expenditures and start to look at the budget requests. That's fully underway now. All of the budget departments were due last Friday. Those are all in, and we're just gathering that data, and we spend in the next several, several weeks diving into full-on budget stuff, details on department requests. At this point, looks like, aside from the school, this is a quick snapshot, looks like the bigger budget requests are coming from the school, DPW, and then there's a, some increase that looks large in the sense of percentage, because the budget is a smaller budget, but council and agent, because just to make up that. Those are probably the three biggest areas of increase. The other, as you know, the other difficult thing to budget for is the health insurance piece of it. Now, we're gonna be in pretty decent shape this year because of what we've done with our healthcare plans and able to save just about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars by making a switch that we did in July for the retiree plans. So, that's gonna help, hopefully, help us drastically. On the flip side to that, it's a, it's a, it's somewhat of a gamble. What happens is at the annual town, at the annual, at the annual meeting for the MMA, MIA has their luncheon annual meeting on the Saturday, of which Andrew and I attend. At that meeting, the, the board for MIA actually sets the range. If you remember, last year the range was zero to ten. We ended up with like two-point something, I don't remember, two-point four, then it came in at. So, they set a range of zero to ten, and what that, I mean, that's, that's over the, that's looking at what the entire trust is doing. So, if there's communities that have had large claims, you know, the trusts in some years, he may be helping out communities and vice versa, they may be helping us. We've looked at our claim ratio for this year, we're up a little bit higher on our HMO claims, so we don't know where we're gonna set. We do know, it sounds like the bar is actually gonna be higher than zero to ten for the range. I think it's gonna be more like two to twelve. So, that automatically is setting us at a, at a higher percentage, you know, as far as a floor, you know, goes. They're ten, they're telling communities to budget for, you know, around five percent, five to seven. I don't think we'll see that, but what we have, what I currently have in our placeholder is a little bit over four percent, which I think we'll be safe at doing. We, you know, again, it's, it's a little bit of a gamble. I don't wanna unnecessarily, you know, predict it to be really high, and then we're slashing everything on the other end, but also don't wanna come when those numbers come, you know, after February to say, hey, this is what we thought we had as a balanced budget, now we gotta go find another two hundred thousand dollars. So, I think where I have it right now is gonna look, is gonna put us in good shape. What I hope happens is similar to what happened last year, is we can drop that down a little bit and free up some, some other available revenue, which we ended up being able to give a little more to the schools and mostly the schools last year for, for fifteen's budget. So, again, there'll be a lot more conversation, obviously, around this. I just wanted to get you the preliminary, you know, where we're kind of at with the revenue forecast. It's, it's still, it's, it's over about, I think it's somewhere around two hundred and twenty-five thousand or so increase to local receipts. So, we've, we've looked at that closely, we've looked at the historical trends, and we have bumped up our local receipts when it was still in an area that's, that's higher than we have been historically, but I think is still conservative and still safe, you know, which is obviously is another, another concern when we look at these things and the unknowns with level funding, local aid, and things like that. So, we have a meeting next week scheduled with Toby Fetter, Toby Fetter from Woodin and Curran, to look at discussing the water sewer enterprise funds and looking to see where, what kind of shape we're gonna be looking at for the water sewer rates and finalizing those budgets. So, it's gonna be a busy few weeks.
All right. I'm planning on at our next meeting have a little more in-depth discussion. I guess if the members have any questions about the revenues, we can ask them then. And I'm also looking for the members to bring forth their ideas on what they want to see in this year's budget process and any budget items they have in particular interest in.
Regarding, if I may, Bill, regarding the process, I did have a brief email back and forth with Peter Campbell, the chairman of the finance committee. They have not yet started their process. They are beginning on the twelfth of January.
Correct.
It's their next meeting, which will be their, basically their start, their starting point. And, you know, 'cause I, I do think it's important that we coordinate our efforts with fine, with the finance committee, so that there's a lot of heavy involvement on our part and on their part, so that we can really have a sort of a robust approach towards the budget this year.
That'll be good. And also the FinCom is probably the place for detailed discussions on budgets, if you wanna know how much paper Kevin uses a year. Well, FinCom will tell you, but we won't do that in this meeting.
I also think it's, it's important to point out that as you look at in Kevin's, one of the two packets that he sent to us, the one with a number of sheets, and I don't know what page it's on, but it shows the debt exclusion.
Yeah.
And for the first time in what looks like, geez, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years, for the first time in ten years, our debt exclusion number has actually gone down from the previous year. Don't know if that's good, good news, bad news, or whatever, but it's going in the right direction, 'cause.
We haven't had, yeah, many borrowing, a little bit. It's a good thing. Anytime we see that number decrease.
Although, you look at that number.
Of course, the six hundred and thirty-one dollars for the school boiler still annoys me since they don't exist. All right, that's excellent.
Twenty twenty-four, we're in really good shape.
As long as nothing else breaks.
Cut it, cut it, well, two things, as long as nothing else breaks and we don't borrow anymore.
Right.
I don't know if either one of those will happen, but, yeah, again, I just wanted to, Lisa, I know you haven't had time to digest this, and certainly any individual members of the board, particularly Kristen, Jason, if there's more specific questions that you have related to where these numbers come from and so forth as the budget process plays out. As Select McGavin stated, the finance committee had reached out to all of the department heads prior to the holiday breaks with a similar template that they had done for the first time last year, requesting that departments provide kind of what their expectations in the fiscal year, what they're expecting to, you know, what their challenges are, if you will, related to budget, where their potential increases are, an overview of what the department's working on, and kind of goals, if you will, for the next budget year. So, what they'll do is they'll take all of that from those major cost centers, they'll invite the individual department heads in to present their requested budgets, and then they'll probably will end up putting together a, a more formal detailed report like they had done last year, which essentially was kind of nice, because it took a lot of the stuff that we provided to them, but it put it into a central location as a sort of one-shot document that provided all of the background for the budget year. So, I anticipate they'll be doing that again this year, and Bob McCarthy and Peter Campbell especially had put a lot of work into that, so we'll continue to keep them updated as we, as we do in moving forward.
Very good. All right, what do we have for item number ten?
Economic development updates, somewhat of a, people, hopefully they spent some holiday money in the downtown, but aside from that, not a lot of action going on. Economic Development Committee met again today after the new year. They have put a little more effort and focus into the individualized work groups that they had identified, those four work groups with EDC members and then staff liaisons to help them with their projects. They're going to be meeting much more frequently and working independently within their smaller groups, and then coordinating a continued ongoing monthly meeting with the full EDC, which I don't know, have you finalized whether that's gonna be in the evening or?
It's Tuesday morning.
It's gonna be that, okay. So, be the first Tuesday at eight-thirty?
Eight to nine-thirty.
Eight to nine-thirty, yeah, which seemed to work for the majority. A couple other projects are still underway. In fact, the planning board's meeting this evening. They should be wrapping up this evening, the Keenav Development, Keenav Definitive Subdivision. The applicant's been working with residents to address concerns. We've had, as the board became aware, we had a few concerns about a couple of things, in particularly with tree trimming and things like that, so been trying to work what we can in that type of situation to encourage the applicant to do right by the, by the residents, and they seem to be doing that from what I understand. The other project is the Waltham Street Project, forty-nine to fifty-one, the former Oriental Delight. They've, has submitted a revised plan based on resident input that they've had over the last several meetings and they've heard from. The revision has six, two family units with an ingress, ingress egress on Waltham Street, former plan, the access to property from Arthur Street. So, that was a big change that was per the residents' request. If you, those that were able to attend any of those hearings, they had heard from a lot of the residents, they were concerned about traffic down Hayes Street and into the neighborhoods and coming in through that back way. Understood the applicant's intent as to why they had proposed it that way, they wanted to kind of keep it more of a community type of thing within, within that development area, but based on the, you know, the neighbors and the, and the residents in the area, they have nixed that, and their new plan shows ingress and egress on from Waltham Street itself. They were originally looking at, I think, a breakaway fence of some sort. That's gone. They purchased the home from, in a butter, that was a single-family home. What's that street?
Roosevelt.
Is that Roosevelt, directly?
The one in the back, wasn't that the Arthur Street that you mentioned?
Yeah, Arthur Street, yeah, 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 that is Arthur Street. So, it's that first house, that white house where it used to be the parking lot entrance, is that first one on the corner there. They have purchased that house, and, you know, I don't know what that means, I don't know what the intent is for that, but the applicant did purchase that home and has closed on it. So, I don't know if that'll be a side project to be inclusive with this project or what's going on, but doesn't, certainly they, they didn't purchase it because they needed more parking or anything, I mean, they have, they have that, but they did, they did purchase that home. That was one resident that seemed to be a proponent of the project in what they were proposing with the reduction, some of the lighting back in that area and things like that, but they no longer are there. I sent the board, 'cause I wasn't sure if the board had actually seen it, there was an article that was in a few different locations from Battle Road Brewery Pub, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that or not. That was in a couple of.
Didn't send me an article.
Yeah, it was sent yesterday or?
Yeah, it started within a wicked local piece that they had pulled from an original press release. What I had done is, I sent you the link to the original press release, particularly because in there it references the opening of a Battle Road Brewery Pub in Maynard in the fall of two thousand and fifteen. That's the brewer that we've, and owners that we've been discussing for the last several months. That's all we have, and we have been in conversations with them. There's nothing definitive, but they have publicly put it out there definitively that they're going to be coming to Maynard as well as two other locations, two other projects, not of the same idea, but they're expanding their brew operation to, where they're going with a, I think a larger distributor that they can get, they can get to more locations within the bars and retail market, but they're also adding a brew pub component with it as well. So, it's unclear, you know, where they'll end up in Maynard. Certainly, there's zoning allows for, you know, a brewery at Clock Tower Place, and that might be an obvious one, but I don't know how well that would fare with an actual brew pub location, but we're hopeful. I mean, those are, you know, things like that are all good, good for the community if we can get some good business and draw folks to, to Maynard as a destination. So, we do keep in touch with, with the, with Greg Hill, the, one of the partners in the project. He's, he's, he's listed in there as well as some others. So, we have been in conversations, we keep in touch, but they're still haven't identified a location, and they're still obviously in need of a liquor license, so it's a couple of things, but I wanted to make sure the board was aware in case you start getting questions asked, because I started to get some already from some residents that had saw the press release article.
What kind of licensing? All alcohol or beer and wine?
Yeah, yeah, they, I think what they would be looking for potentially is a, is both, is an all-alcohol for the brew pub, and then they'd be looking for a, a retail component as well, at an actual brewery piece, so they could actually sell, they'd do a brewery, but they'd actually would sell bottled.
And we currently have a retail beer and wine open, right?
Yeah, I think there's one beer and wine, but there isn't, you know, there isn't an all-alcohol yet. Yeah, yeah, they, I think what they would be looking for potentially is a, is both, is an all-alcohol for the brew pub, and then they'd be looking for a, a retail component as well, at an actual brewery piece, so they could actually sell, they'd do a brewery, but they'd actually would sell bottled.
And we currently have a retail beer and wine open, right?
Yeah, I think there's one beer and wine, but there isn't, you know, there isn't an all-alcohol yet at this point.
And there's no beer and wines available, retail beer and wines, there's none of those either, or pouring beer and wines?
No. There's one open, yeah. Technically, there is, but we have, we have two interested. El Whipple, January 1, had to surrender their, their beer and wine.
Because they got the full.
Because they got the full, but we do have two applicants, two interested parties that are ideally one is going to move on, two local businesses that are already established.
Kevin, is there any truth to the rumor that I've heard that these people have corporate offices at Clock Tower right now? They do?
Yes, right after, shortly after they, we met with them, they had, they had conversations with management at Clock Tower Place, they'd met with the town, and they decided to move a small office operation in the mill, so they've been in there since August, I guess, probably, yeah, probably since August, they've, you know, it's a small operation.
And is it, is it the Battle Road that has the place, or is it this, because there's some type of a?
No, it's the, it's the whole.
A corporation or something that sort of bought them, or?
The whole group LLC.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The whole group LLC. The Battle Road folks that were original owners of that were brewmasters and understood the brewing aspect, but my understanding is they're looking to expand the business piece of it, that's when the whole, the whole group LLC, which is of what Greg Hill is an owner of, you know, they had partnered with them in some sort of operation to expand the business piece of it and the restaurant, which they currently don't do, so, yeah, they want to, basically, they want to get more kegs out the door, they want to be able to produce and distribute more than what they're doing, so, and I think, it sounds very promising, they're very established, the conversations we've had with them, they're definitely business-focused, and, you know, I think it would be a great, great to have them located here in Maynard and be a, a good win for us, and, you know, whether it's the mill or somewhere else, I don't know.
So that touches on one of the questions I was going to have is, does that mean we're moving forward on the liquor license bill?
That's kind of, we haven't, that's why I wanted to discuss, I think, since they're all out now, probably we want to move forward with, it's drafted, legal has drafted, it's a matter of getting it formally signed by all of the board and submitted, and I think we're probably in a good place right now to do that.
And is it the all-alcohol, or we're going for?
Yeah, there was six all-alcohol.
For package store too, or?
Yeah, I think it was six and, six and two, or something like that. We had, we had requested, it was definitely six all-alcohol.
Six and one, but I thought there was an issue of, we're going for a beer and wine, and we had one open, so that would threaten the whole thing.
It might cause a problem, yeah.
Has that been remedied?
It's still open. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to look and see, I think they must group them all in, I don't know if it, if it strategically makes sense to do two separate requests or what, but, you know, it may be that they just may, if we, if we submit it and it still is open, they could approve the all-alcohol and just not approve the beer and wine because it's.
If they're not necessarily, I mean, just because we write the language, I mean, that's actually what gets introduced in the legislature.
Exactly, yeah.
So is that?
But we can move on that now.
Left need our action next meeting, or do we just need to sign something in the meantime?
Yeah, no, we can put it on the next meeting.
Okay.
I have it, I've been sitting on it, not knowing what was going to happen with.
Does that need to be posted?
Uh, no, I don't think it does. I'll confirm.
Town meeting thing.
Yeah, we, town meeting approved it, it's just acting on the submittal to, yeah. We may get an agenda item for our next meeting.
Okay. Anything else on the economic development?
No, if you have anything more?
None of the economic development.
That one other, just real quick, the, been in contact, keep in contact with the folks from Clock Tower Place, that's the status there, it's still, there's no change still at this point, we're still confident that the new, new ownership will happen, but it hasn't, they haven't closed on it yet. I think there's some holdup with the bank and some legal proceedings from other interested parties that are looking to get paid before they close on the property, so that, we had originally been told, I think, December 8, 17th was going to be a closing date, December 17th has a closing date on the note, and communication and conversation with Wellsley Management today is that it could be, you know, it hasn't happened yet, it could be in the next 10 days.
What do we know about the new note holder?
If it ends up being with them, we have met with them, they've come in to, kind of, just to introduce themselves and discuss.
They're from Texas, aren't they?
No, they're local, right in Waltham, located in Waltham, have a, a very distinguished portfolio of redevelopment and, you know, business office park experience, mill experience, located right here in Waltham, been around a long time, I think will be, you know, would be a good addition for the next, the next phase out there, so.
Okay.
But again, I keep coming back that there's really no updates because nothing's, nothing's moved at this point, so, the only thing that's moved is council and aging.
Some furniture.
Some cabinets, other than that. TA report, yeah. TA report, the, Andrew had sent out a notice to the board as well as to several other folks about the Council on Aging Director hire, her excited that she'll be starting on January 20th, plan to, that's actually our next, our next leadership team meeting, introduce those to department heads at the leadership team meeting, and also will be attending that night's board of selectmen meeting to meet the board on the 20th, and at that time, I think we can provide an overview, another overview of the search, which probably would, you know, be better when we introduce, when we introduce her to the board, but January 20th, and we're excited to have new leadership down at the Council on Aging, and I think they're going to be a great fit, you know, as the input from several of the Council on Aging members as well.
Where's she coming from?
She, prior, she was a longtime Council on Aging Director with the City of Marlborough, she's now with a private group. Summit, yeah, Summit, Summit Elder Care, as a, what's her title? Senior, she works with seniors there.
I must say, I am familiar with Summit Healthcare, my mother was a resident, if you want to call it, one of their clients, she didn't live there, but they have adult daycare programs, and it's a fabulous program. She went to the one in Leominster, I don't know if.
I think that's where she, Worcester, yeah.
Worcester, yeah, there's one in Worcester.
She lives in Hudson, Marlborough. Somewhere around here.
Based on my experience with them, that program is outstanding.
Yeah, that's, that's good to hear. I think, I said we'll talk more about it, but she does, definitely has both the municipal and private experience, you know, with the municipality, the mayor's change, and, you know, so do department heads and leadership there, so moved on to the private sector and still maintained her work with the senior population, I think will be a good fit, so. Staying on the Council on Aging topic, the Maynard Golf Course is coming along well, they'll be ready for the open house, January 22nd, the board should have all received, did they, individual invitations? Did you get?
I saw there was something.
Okay.
Oh, I have an opener.
Oh, okay, yeah, so each of the board members should have received individual invitations for the open house on January 22nd, which is Thursday, 10:30, I think, 10:30 to 12:30? 10 to 12, something like that.
Ribbon padding around 10:45, maybe a little closer to 11.
22.
Yeah. And so staying on the topic of Council on Aging, it's, unfortunately, make an announcement with regards to the passing of a Council on Aging member who passed away this morning, Tom Papson.
Oh, really?
Who certainly, most of the board knows Tom, has worked with Tom in some capacity over the years, and we got notice, Andrew got notice from talking to his wife that he actually had passed this morning and had been, had been ill for some time, but certainly the last several weeks was, was pretty rough, was my understanding, so they're not planning any, any immediate service for Tom, I think they're doing something at his church, which is getting a renovation of some sort to like the altar and things like that, so I think they're going to just plan some sort of service memorial in, in the spring, so there'll be nothing to advertise for him in the immediate future. So, yeah, it was sad news today, and we wish his wife and family the best, so, and Tom and MJ Papson are both Council on, MJ is Tom's wife, Council on Aging members, and Tom has been a long-term COA member and a very outspoken individual in support of the seniors, so. Couple of other items I have, not COA-related, Facilities Manager job posting has been, job has been posted to the MMA site, the town's website, a couple of other entities that are relevant to the facilities manager, including the Mass Association for Facilities Managers. We're looking at kind of an initial review of like around January 20th, and hope to, you know, follow those well, if things are in a good place, hope to have somebody in place hopefully by March 1st, I don't know if we'll, if we'll get there, but Greg is gone, as you know, he started his new position at Assabit yesterday, so if anybody came in the back door, you know how we miss him, the back door, we had a wind issue yesterday, and it's all whacked out, askew, and we're getting that fixed, but that would have been something that would have been seamless, so the sooner the better, certainly, you know, getting us into early spring, getting a new individual acclimated, we continue the discussions, and I think have some follow-up meetings scheduled with the custodial group to looking at the consolidated services and, you know, we'll see what comes out of that piece, but that conversation is still continuing. The other item is the golf course management RFPs, those are all out, 11 companies actually picked up documents, we'll see how many submit them, they're all due in the 8th? Thursday, yeah, this week, Thursday, January 8th, they're due, they're due to be submitted, due back, it's nice to see 11 companies, I don't know how many will show interest or submit. How many did we have at the walk-through? It was three? I think three attended the publicized walk-through, one including Sterling, the existing management company, so we'll see.
Is that one of those things where you have to take the lowest bid?
No, yeah.
Best responsive and responsible applicant is the, is the law, and there's, I believe there's eight criteria that we set out, which is how we'll determine the most responsive and responsible.
Yeah, the IFB we would, if it was an invitation for bid on like a product or some, you know, service that was set up that way, they usually, they're submitted separately, so you're, you're scoring the actual technical piece, and then the, the pricing proposals aren't opened until after those have all been scored.
So we have, we have the opportunity to evaluate and make those determinations ourselves, it's not strictly based on opening up an envelope and looking at.
That's right. So we grade them, and that we, the highest graded one is the one we want, right? We open up their price envelope, we may not be able to afford them.
Right.
We're not obligated to award it.
Okay.
But we have the option of taking maybe a little less quality for something if we can afford that.
Am I missing anything? Yeah, actually, I got one more thing, just want to note, if those haven't seen the Oars letter from the Assabit River, I think it's important to just kind of highlight for the public, if they haven't seen it, that the Songus River Day, Rochelle Lern, I don't know if, you might know Rochelle, right? Rochelle Lern is a high school teacher here in Maynard, she runs, I think, the science program, I've dealt with her over the years on a number of initiatives, as well as David Mark, who is a Maynard resident and dedicated volunteer, they received congressional recognition for their work promoting environmental stewardship from Representative Nikki Songus, and just nice piece that came out in December's Oars newsletter, and thank them for their efforts with regards to.
Can the board, this board give some type of formal recognition to them as a result of that?
Yeah, sure, I mean, we can always.
I think that would be a good opportunity for us to recognize there, maybe invite them to a meeting in a couple of, you know, maybe not the next one, but the one after that, just to thank them. I think that would be a good thing for us to do.
Okay.
Up to the chair.
That's fine. I don't know how we're going to beat, you know, Nikki Songus, but, okay.
We have a very nice.
Congressional recognition, let me tell you.
Well, it's, it's really just a time for the town to be.
I just, that's why I want to make sure, you know, again, because sorry, and then I want to make sure that the public was aware of it, for those that hadn't seen it, and publicly thank them for their work that they do with regards to the Oars Group. That's all I have.
All right. For the TA report, just fair warning for Kevin, I have a month's worth of email I haven't gone through, so I'll probably be asking you some very old questions.
Yeah.
Hopefully, everything will be taken care of.
You're not going to go through it now, though?
No, no, I'll get a look at it sometime.
It's worth it, yeah.
Well, it's very early, Andrew, so we can stop.
You know where to find me.
Couple little things, can you copy us on your response to Mary Branley's letter about the Boys and Girls Club inserts into the water bill? I know we figured it all out a long time ago.
Yeah, I got to go back and.
I didn't realize we hadn't told her, but, I mean, it was all like complex and pricey.
I thought we did, we came back, I had done the research to find out what the cost would be, I think, and we came, I presented it back to the board, I don't think there was any action taken on it, because there was talk about, you know, whether we, however we break it off.
It was much bigger than we thought.
Yeah.
But if you can just.
Yeah, I'll dig that out.
Get it for the new members and stuff, and just remind us what it was.
I will, I'm going to remind myself.
And there's a meeting about 129 yesterday, and I'm really jealous, because Chris has this really cool book of information and stuff, how do I get one of those?
You gotta talk to Bill, the members are.
I've been asking the same.
I'll show it to you guys sometime.
Jeez.
Well, that's.
You can have all six volumes.
I left that off of my report.
I only have two volumes, there's more to come, and every time I walk through the building, I get a little bit, a little bit extra.
Oh, I'm still a little, I don't know what got ever permitted by Plant Board, so, I know 80% of the story.
I was going to talk about it when we get to.
Oh, okay, fine, fine, fine.
I left it off for Chris.
All right, I'll ignore that then. The only other thing I got is, is there a DEP meeting sometime, does that ever get scheduled?
No, we haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay.
I had a follow-up this week, they.
I think I got two from the.
Today? Yeah, there was three dates that were proposed, January 20th, February 3rd, and February 17th.
Sounds about right.
But I hadn't seen, we got back to them and said that those, you know, that those dates were acceptable, but I hadn't seen a final.
Yeah, I got an email at 417 today.
I don't think I got.
Leominster, this is in the state, let me see if I can find the date in here.
Okay, those were the three proposed dates, though.
Which all correspond with one of our, with our meeting.
With our meeting.
It's not in the emails, I'm not opening the letter.
They picked, they picked a date, you'd say?
Assuming, it's the first correspondence I've seen.
Yeah.
Gotcha, so they're back from vacation.
Yeah, well, they're done moving. Relocating offices.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do that a fair amount. Yeah, they do that for them.
They're getting ready to find out who their new boss is.
Well, their new boss has already been selected.
Yeah.
But they don't know him. Haven't worked for him.
He's a, he's an inside, he's an internal guy.
Off of DEP, the commissioner, but not the secretary.
All right, well, you can tell us later when you find it out. That's good for me, so going, old new business, Tim, what have you got?
CPC is not having a meeting this week, but on the 21st, they're going to start bringing in applicants to discuss key questions that the board has drawn up for some pretty heavy projects we've got coming our way, so, I mean, their way, not me anymore. But they're going to start doing that soon.
So are our projects still on the list, or they got knocked aside by bigger ones?
Who's our project?
I think they're both still there.
Really?
Yeah.
Remind me, which ones?
The display case, the historical, and the, I think we sent something in for the rail trail.
I believe those are still on the table, yeah.
Yeah. Those are the, I know those ones and the playground for the fall are the only ones I'm aware of. I don't know what else they received.
Been a couple more that have come in recently. Heavy plate.
Okay. Hey, Kevin, one thing before I forget. There's a new, or there's a current cycle of a federal grant program for transportation access to federal lands. So if we have something that needs sidewalks or roads or something that touches the wildlife refuge, we might be able to do something with it.
Is it, could we?
That's be our land that provides access to federal lands.
So it could be old Marlborough too?
Marlborough.
Could be.
Winter Street.
Rail Trail?
Yeah.
Rail Trail.
What's Winter Street?
Yeah, and see, I don't know if the rail trail needs something extra or something, but I'm pretty good at writing those grants.
Who, who's that through?
It's MAP 21, it's the Federal Lands Access Program Grant.
Yeah, let's see, and that's for road and sidewalk?
Any transportation, anything.
Any access, okay.
You know, it could be water access, could be anything, but I've done, I've done three or four of them successfully in the last couple of hours, so.
Okay.
I could put it together if there was a decent idea.
Is anything?
And it's a joint sponsor, I mean, the applicant is the municipality and then, you know, the federal agency would say, yeah, it's a good idea. You both sign it.
Do they have to say yes?
Yeah.
They both do, okay. Yeah, we'll look at it if, if something stands out that you think.
Yeah, I don't know if anything's going on, you know, paving a road. I'm sorry, all right, Tim, you're all set?
Yep.
All right, Chris?
It does, that's different. Well, where did I get my book?
Where'd you get your book?
I got the book from Bill Nemser. The book is just a recap of all of the town's documents from 129 Parker. And the meeting last night was an informational session really, that was directed by or hosted by Bill and I think that Ken Estabrook kind of ran the show. It was the historical perspective on the entire project from his viewpoint was given by Brendan Chetwin. And, and Ken Estabrook gave his perspective on the same, the historical piece where Brendan left off. And the town council was there and what the town council said basically, the takeaway from the whole meeting is that everyone was under the agreement, including, well, not in the room, but the builders, the developers council apparently is in agreement with our council that the NBOD, the memorandum of agreement, and the site plan are all been, they've all been approved, correct? And they're all still in effect. All, all three items are still in effect. And everything else is, you know, just hearsay, opinion, or, you know, anything else. But those three documents are, are all still in effect. But that the developer does not want to build under the previous site plan. And there was a lot of discussion in last night's meeting that the reason for that was that the larger building had been demolished. And in the original plan, it was not to be demolished. Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
So, so it was a lot of historical perspective, a lot of discussion about it. Bill Nemser is going to have the meeting here, the meeting recorded, he's going to have it, have it transcribed and it will be made available to us and to anybody in town who's interested. And Bill Nemser was also going to contact the developer just to make sure that they understand that the town is under the impression that, you know, they and us are still bound by the terms of the NBOD, the memorandum of agreement, and the previously approved site plan.
Just one thing, are we talking the concept plan or the site plan? It's one of those things where I kind of.
Yeah, yeah. They called it, they called it both last night.
Yeah, they technically both.
All right, so I'll look forward to that stuff because I don't really understand the site plan part.
I think the biggest.
I don't need an explanation tonight, I just.
I think the biggest takeaway is, is that the applicant isn't of the same understanding or agreement that, that the NBOD covers the entire 58 acre site and that they can't build under the underlying zoning. They have to build under the NBOD because that's what the MOA says. And we specifically wrote it that way, which, which is a huge changer.
The concept plan does not say that, but the MOA trumps it. And the MOA does say.
And the MOA trumps the zoning because it's a contractual agreement. So if the contractual agreement is that the NBOD is on the entire 58 acres, they couldn't build under the underlying industrial zoning. They could, but then we'd have to void the MOA and we'd have, you know, it could be allowed, but the way it currently stands is it prohibits it.
Be interesting to see the stuff, cool.
Yeah.
If anybody is interested in one of the books, just let me know, I'll have, I'll ask Bill to just put a couple more together. It's all stuff that he has, you know, readily available.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, but that's all different. David?
That's what we got.
Yeah, Kevin, I guess this is really a discussion for the entire board. There was a, there was a message again in our packet regarding the parking issue at Green Meadow. What steps back, I guess it's now probably six or five or six years ago, I, I worked briefly with Brendan on looking into alternatives and options for that location. I remember Bill, he wasn't a member of the board at the time, but speaking with Bill and Bill said, you know, getting an engineer, traffic engineer to look at that, that type of a location, given that it involves children and, and nobody's going to touch it for, for a small project like that, I don't know if you still agree with that.
Even more so.
Even more so.
Even more so. So the point is, I think for, you know, my kids are out of that school, but when they were going to Green Meadow, it was a nightmare, that parking lot. Especially, and it's only twice a day, it's a drop-off and it's a pickup, but it's a nightmare. And I remember a specific word from the chief of police at the time, that it was an accident waiting to happen, but. So I think we should address it, see what we can do, again, sort of revitalize that effort because we're hearing, we heard from the woman who's the police, the crossing guard, a few weeks back. Now we've heard.
Months back.
Months back. Now we've heard from another resident. I just think that we really have to sort of accept the fact that we need to take.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, it's on, it's still on my radar. In fact, right before the holidays, I had a meeting with Dr. Girardi specifically to discuss that. It's even surfaced up more recently because of the question about the additional, potential additional parking piece, of which we've done the research on, we think there's no issue there. He doesn't have any interest necessarily in that particular piece of the property, but he doesn't think he's going to resolve anything. You know, based on what they're proposing to expand additional parking, he says it's not going to, it's not going to do anything. There's huge elevation issues between the two, you'd have to build a ramp. He, you know, I had offered, you know, that he come to a board of selectmen's meeting for further discussion on it. That's what he was interested in doing. Because it, the interest really spun around like, hey, should we continue to explore what it will take to make that parking an option? I had heard from some others that, you know, his, his long-term vision was potentially relocating that playground that's right there in the Green Meadow entryway, potentially to somewhere like that. So I wanted to kind of get his take on it, but what he wants to do is engage for a, for a, some sort of survey to look at the traffic flow and.
Well, the traffic flow is probably part of the issue, but I wonder if anybody's ever considered swapping what they currently use as the teacher parking lot with the, with the other parking lot. And that spreads out with traffic can go in and actually there is a flow at the other location, which might help, I don't know. But at least it could be explored.
Yeah, no, these are all things that, and I, I don't know enough of the daily operation.
Yeah, you really have to go over there at opening and closing and see what it's all about.
He seemed to have a pretty good idea of what would work and what wouldn't, and the logistics of, of it. So I would want to defer back to.
As long as it's on the radar.
Yeah, no, like I said, it was right there because actually Bill and I talked about what's the status of, you know, of, of that particular property. And that was when we were going through all the research of it. And I said, well, we put it back out to the schools to see if, you know, if they had any interest, the police, anybody, you know, if there was any concerns. And I did meet again with Dr. Girardi about it and he, he has no issue with, you know, doing that, but he doesn't think it's going to resolve anything.
So the whole thing, there was also back, my recollection, when, you know, six years ago when we were looking into it, there was some concern expressed that at the time that that property was deeded to the town, that it would only be used as play space or recreational space.
Yeah.
The, the area where we then built the.
Skate park.
The skateboard park.
Yeah, we show no restrictions.
There's no records of that. That's what people have always.
I know, that, that's what I was told.
Yeah.
I, we can't find anything that shows, and the deed doesn't show that.
All right, so just to clarify, the skateboard area, we've determined it's not protected chapter land. Theoretically, we could pave it tomorrow, but.
Correct.
School committee is looking at bigger solutions.
Well, yeah, Dr. Girardi really wants to discuss a bigger solution for the overall traffic and parking issues there.
Do they need to discuss that with us? Can't they just do it?
Yeah, they could, yeah.
Well, I think part of.
Want us to pay?
Well, there's funding issues. Well, there's funding, well, well, theoretically the funding come out of the school department, but the other piece of, of the superintendent's plan is that it will actually affect both entrances and a chunk of great road, which would fall under our.
Oh, wow.
He wanted to reroute all traffic one direction from Green Meadow entrance through and then send people around.
Just make in only?
Yeah, there is a, there is a one-way flow pattern.
Component, and I, I don't want to speak to all of it because it's a little more intricate than that.
I mean, when you, when you design a new school, you don't design anything like Green Meadow, you design with the high school. We have a dedicated bus drop-off and a dedicated parent drop-off, you know, where you have the multiple circle routes there. It's just, it's tough, but again, I just wanted to gauge their interest in that, in that project, particularly if we go out and, you know, make it a parking lot and throw some asphalt on it, it doesn't resolve anything other than we've spent some money on it.
It's, it's clearly a traffic flow issue is part of it.
Yeah.
But there might be some other inventive, as I suggested earlier, you know, the, you might be able to slap some asphalt between Tiger Drive and the other parking lot and have another entrance and egress and relieve some of the pressure.
Yeah.
But, all things to be considered.
Okay. Anything else?
No. Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you very much. Jason?
Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you. Anything else on your old new business list?
Oh, sir.
No, all right.
Just real quick, I know, I went to mention, because I didn't prepare the agenda or packet this time, as you know. One thing I noticed in the correspondence is it provided the, the letters with regards to 129 Parker Street, but the letter in between those two, where the attorney references that the town didn't respond to us, that letter wasn't in there. So it shows a progression of, just so the board's aware, that we did respond to their initial letter in October 29th.
Oh, so then we have our second letter or our first?
Yeah, so just so you're aware.
There's a letter saying that we did respond, by the way.
Yeah, but there was another letter, so I just wanted to make it clear, it wasn't like we were ignoring the applicant from October to December. There was a response back in November and then.
Very timely response, as I recall.
Yeah, it was a day, a couple of days, so. Anyway, that was the only thing I wanted to make everyone aware of.
All right, well, very good. So our last thing is executive session.
Yeah, for that I just have approval of minutes so we can get those off our table.
All right, so we need to clear the room.
I gotta grab.
Don't we have to make the motion to move into a.
Oh, yeah, do we have to do that?
Will not reconvene.
Sure. So you're gonna, what's the?
Yeah, Bill has.
What's the purpose then? Is that a choice?
Matter of approval of minutes, and then when I do the minutes, it'll reflect how we did it before.
Okay.
It doesn't matter, pick one of these per se, we can write in the purpose.
Okay, in the matter of review and approval of executive session minutes.
Correct.
Motion to convene an executive session was made by Cranshaw and seconded by Gavin. Roll call vote to go into session on the vote motion, Gavin?
Aye.
Creel?
Aye.
Chris, yea or nay on executive session?
Yea.
Cranshaw, yea. Egan?
Yep.
Yep. This meeting was convened in open session, notice was duly given. After the executive session, we will not reconvene. And the purpose is to review and approve minutes. And we're good to go, time being 9:48.